All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with this evening's meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the May 15th, 2023 City of Vandelia Council Meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this evening's agenda to add an action item for the Ohio Department of Liquor Control at 6415 Miller Lane.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to amend this evening's agenda to add an action item for the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of April 17th, along with the council meeting minutes of April 17th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to communications petitions and awards. And at this time, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Suker to come to the podium. We're going to have a proclamation for National Police Week.
Well, Congress and the President of the United States have decided to designate May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. So it's important that all of our citizens understand that duties of our police officers, the hazards, the sacrifices that the Division of Police and its members deal with on daily basis. They also, our police officers also understand that their duty is to protect us against violence, disorder, and protecting the innocent against the deceptive and the weak against the oppressive. I'd also like to mention, in honor of Lieutenant James E. Bohan, a member of the Division, who gave his life in duty, on duty, on the 7th of 30th, 1969. He made an ultimate sacrifice representing our community. And that's a well, very well-respected officer in our community, if we're all aware of that story. So I have, on behalf of my colleagues at the city council, I'd like to present this proclamation to Lieutenant Suker proclaiming May 15th, 2023 as Police Memorial Day and the week of May 14th through the 20th as Police Week in the City of Vandelia. We recognize the members of the Division of Police in the City of Vandelia. We play a central role in safeguarding our rights and freedoms as a resident. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to have Public Service Director Rob Cronk. There you are. Come on up.
Oh, yeah. Everybody, come on. Public Works Superintendent Volle Ritchie and Assistant Public Works Superintendent Jake Heslop.
Welcome, gentlemen. Public work service provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens on our everyday lives. The ability of our community to attract and retain driving commerce and quality developments and to maintain superior images to those that are traveling through our city is greatly influenced by the outstanding work that is done by our Public Works program. So on behalf of our colleagues in city council, I'd like to present this proclamation to Rob Cronk, Director of Public Service, proclaiming that May 22nd through 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week in the City of Vandelia, recognizing the contributions for which public works officials makes each day of our health, safety, and comfort, quality of life. Thank you. All right, next we have the introduction of oath of office. I defer to Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We are going to swear in two new full-time firefighter paramedic inspectors. These positions are the result of not only city council adding three additional firefighter paramedic inspectors, but also backfilling after the internal promotion of three fire lieutenants. I'll introduce both of them and then I'll conduct their swear-ins. And if I forget to say it, I'd just love for you to bring, you know, your families up here when we pin that badge on you. So the first, I'll ask Amanda Everett to stand up, please. Today's the big day. Amanda has worked with us for a couple of years since May 2021 as a part-time firefighter, EMT basic. She's also worked since 2019 in Xenia Township Fire Department. She lives over in Tip City and has received various certifications from Sinclair. And so, thank you very much, and I'll just call you up in a moment. Next, we have Sean Tyler Day. Here he is, a Vandelia resident and very excited. Sean has, not Sean, Tyler. Sean goes by Tyler, right? And we're definitely not going to mess that up, even though I wrote it right here. The, he's been on the London Fire Department. He was there 2018 to 2020. He's been on the Vandelia Division of Fire as a part-timer and worked in sanitary service and definitely just has a really good attitude. And we're really excited about him living where he serves. And also, he's a graduate of Kenton Ridge High School. And so, without further ado, Ms. Everett, I'll ask you to come up and then followed by Mr. Day.
I, Amanda Everett, solemnly affirm.
I, Amanda Everett, solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A firefighter paramedic inspector.
A firefighter paramedic inspector.
Within the Division of Fire.
Within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations, well. Yeah, generally, generally, what a guy. That's okay. When you promote, you'll know what to do.
There you go.
Think positive. No, no forgiveness. I don't know. Thank you very much. I, Sean Tyler Day, solemnly swear.
I, Sean Tyler Day, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinance of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A firefighter paramedic inspector.
A firefighter paramedic inspector.
Within the Division of Fire.
Within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations.
And just a moment to do. Okay.
Cambridge.
This is Amanda's pens.
That's right.
One, one letter for each pen. We be her.
I will send you an update.
We're going to do a lot of really cool local government stuff here. So you're definitely going to want to hang out and not leave. But if you are here just for a swear-in and aren't that into it, now's a pretty good time to leave.
Look at everybody we're on.
Thank you very much, Division of Fire, and guests.
Mr. Wynn.
Yeah.
Just a guy to throw.
Yep. I'll do it.
Do it there.
I'll do it now, right?
You want to do it now? I'll miss it. You want to do it before your information items? Just put this down here. Oh, no, I messed it up. I'll do my information item. Okay. All right, I think you got it, everybody. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and your comment.
It happens every time. Tom Grace, 10400 North Castle Road. But thank you for the opportunity to speak. Express my appreciation for the questions and discussions during today's study session. It's probably the most discussion, most questions and discussions I've seen actually in a study session from the council. And I appreciate the questions you guys asked. I think they were informative. I think you provided some clarification to the residents that are watching. I want to express my appreciation. Assistant City Manager Holloway. I don't know why. You met with me to explain the process of the zoning overlays. For whatever reason, in my reading of the zoning code, I found it confusing. She was able to explain it. What they are, how they're intended to work, what the expected outcomes are to allow the proper, the proper development in the areas where we have overlays. It was very helpful. And I appreciate her patience with me. After the hearing tonight's study session, I would encourage you to table the, table the ordinances on the bond issues for the land and the fire truck so that you can reevaluate your council's policies towards funding something at a six to seven and a half percent interest rate versus being able to pay for it out of existing funds. I think that issue was raised, and I would encourage you to, you know, there was a comment about maybe looking at tomorrow's retreat. I would encourage you to at least table that so that you could look at it at tomorrow's retreat and decide if that is indeed the direction council wishes to go. And then lastly, as far as the retreat goes, it's probably too late, but I would encourage council and the city manager to work towards having the council retreats broadcast via Zoom and potentially recorded for the residents that are not in positions to either attend or watch those kinds of activities. We do it for the study sessions. We do it for the council meetings. I know you couldn't, probably don't have the facilities to do it. I believe the fall retreat is what, was at the golf course. But in general, it's a public meeting. It's open to the public. I would encourage you to look at, maybe going in and see if we can put those on Zoom and potentially have those recorded like the regular meetings so that citizens can view that at a later time. The fact that they're held, especially, you know, tomorrow, it's 3:00 on a Tuesday afternoon. The vast majority of Vandelia residents are probably working at their jobs or taking care of kids or have kids that pick up from schools. I just think it would be a good policy for the council and the city managers to consider doing that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else would like to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report where we have some information items. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Big weekend coming up, May 18th to the 21st. Community garage sale will be, this weekend, registration is on the city's website. We'll post that list. It's open to Butler Township residents and City of Vandelia residents. And on that interactive map, you can see all of the things that are available. We will also have shred day on Friday. That is from 9:00 a.m. till noon. That's free for all Vandelia residents. They just pull up to the municipal building and the parking lot, and we safely stow those items that are to be shredded. City offices will be closed on the 29th of May. That's an observance of Memorial Day. And the rec center that day will be open 7:00 a.m. to noon for the fitness area, track, and gymnasium only. With regard to the summer schedule for council meetings, our June meeting will be held on Monday, June 19th at 7:00 p.m. The study session is slated to begin at 6:00 p.m. I think that it's likely that it'll start earlier. And so, there's no first meeting because there's not any business to conduct for BZA or Planning Commission. I'd point out that if you've gone down Dixie Drive today, either in City of Vandelia or Butler Township, that you'll see that many of the veterans banners have been put up. They look really good. And I know that Councilmember Follak delivered them himself at 6:45 this morning. And so, we got right on those, and they look really, really great. And I'd just like to say thank you for all your work that's gone into that. They look really, really nice. That concludes my report. There is one action item that was brought up with the amended council agenda, if I may.
Go ahead.
Your Honor, this is, we reviewed the application of ALDI on Miller Lane to request for a new license. There's no objections for the license, and we would recommend that a hearing not be conducted.
Specifically, the liquor license.
A liquor license, that's what I meant, sir. And so, I would just request a simple motion to not hold a hearing.
All right, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Follak not to request a hearing for the Ohio Department of Liquor Control for 6415 Miller Lane. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That takes us to old business, which we have none, and that brings us to the first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-36. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Place Dynamics LLC for professional services associated with the preparation of a market feasibility study for job creation and revitalization area number one.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. In the study session, I misspoke due to a misunderstanding with the law director. The amount in this resolution is correct, $49,900. I gave you a briefing in the prior meeting regarding the need and the desire for a market study to look at the downtown core at National Road and Dixie Drive. This is an important step in the process because it'll allow for objective third-party analysis to determine the types of businesses, housing options like sit-down restaurants, professional offices, medium-density owner-occupied residential condos and mixed-use buildings that are likely to be successful in Vandelia's revitalization efforts in 2022. City council created the Job Creation and Revitalization Area and Corresponding Fund. $50,000 is included in the 2023 budget for the project. Staff conducted an RFQ. There were two qualified respondents. And my recommendation is that council authorize city manager to negotiate and to enter into a professional service agreement with Place Dynamics LLC of New Berlin, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed $49,900. We've spoken at this at several junctures. And, and so, I'm asking that, even though we introduced it earlier today, that we go ahead and authorize this tonight by resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-36 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 23-R-36. Are there any other comments? Another thing I would mention is this is just another step in the following of the comprehensive plan that we approved some five to six years ago. Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-37.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional service contract with OHM Advisors for the purpose of performing architectural design work for the Robinette Park.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Earlier this year, city council adopted the 2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This includes development of an accessible playground and splash pad as one of its primary recommendations. The master plan is the result of extensive and evidence-based community engagement practices. In addition, the staff has partnered with Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disability Services and a Playground Advisory Committee to help guide this initiative. The city has received outside funding in the form of grants and direct appropriations in support of the project. The city has applied for and is pursuing future congressionally-directed spending and capital budget bill funding. OHM Advisors has partnered with the City of Vandelia on both the 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, and it was the local partner on the Park and Rec Master Plan with Prose Consulting. We've worked with staff to develop the Robinette Park conceptual design, which we had up there, and based on OHM's understanding of our community and the project scope, entering into a professional services agreement for the planning, designing, engineering, compilation of bid documents, and associated processes relating to the Robinette Park Design Project is the best option for advancing the project in a cost-effective and efficient manner. This project will improve quality of life and service delivery for the immediate neighborhood and will attract families to Vandelia. In addition, the project directly corresponds with several 2023 citywide policy goals, including small-city, big opportunity, enhance infrastructure, fiscal sustainability, trust and confidence, sharpen the saw, and vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-37 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution 23-R-37 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember, Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-38.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Vandelia Butler Board of Education for joint facility use.
Mr. Wynn.
Your Honor, the City of Vandelia and Vandelia Butler Board of Education entered into a joint facility use agreement in 2013 regarding the joint use of various city and school properties. The agreement ended on April 14th, 2023. Representatives of the school district and the city crafted an updated joint facility use agreement that would go into effect on July 1, 2023, with a term of five years with automatic renewals for successive five years, ending on June 30th, 2033. The proposed agreement continues with language from the original agreement, along with updated language concerning any school district, desired facility upgrades to the softball, baseball fields and sports complex, as well as the tennis courts at Helkey Park. The proposed agreement also includes references to annual agreements for use of the rec center pool for Butler swim teams and Castle Hills Golf Course for the Butler golf teams.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move. Make a motion. We approve Resolution 23-R-38.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 23-R-38 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-39.
A resolution awarding the bid for the resurfacing of various streets requested by the Public Works Department to Barrett paving materials at the lowest and best bid price of $818,213.2.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Oh, just stand by. There we go. Okay. Your Honor, bids were opened publicly for our annual street resurfacing project on May 9th, 2023. Three sets of specifications were issued. All three contractors submitted. Bids ranged from $818,213.2 up to just north of $969,000. Our estimate for the project was $490,000. This project will follow our concrete curb and sidewalk replacement project, which is now underway. Work will most likely take place in the late summer and early fall. I've enclosed a map of the streets proposed for this, proposed for this year. I recommend awarding our contract to Barrett Paving as the lowest and best bid at their price of $818,213.2. The project estimate was $887,000. And so, we have an actual, I don't know why I have this, is that, oh, that was from the, from the curb and sidewalk was the $490. Our estimated cost for the project was $887,000. And we've got a total of $1,339,000 appropriated in the budget for both concrete repairs and street surfacing. Since our bids were much lower than our estimate, I'm recommending that the city council authorize a 10% as a change order in order to pave two additional streets that won't require any concrete work, and those are Old Webster and Paddock.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-39.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Resolution 23-R-39 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-40.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of portable and mobile Marx 800 radios and declaring the current equipment being replaced as surplus property.
Mr. Wynn, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is phase two of the radio upgrade project that began in '22. We had first-generation Marx radios. The 800 Marx radios are about 15 years old. The cheat, well... old. The cheat, well, actually Captain Garver explained some of the reasons relating to strategy, tactics, and reliability necessitating the replacement. The project will allow for the replacement of fourteen portable radios, three vehicle-mounted mobile radios, and an upgrade of Engine Two's onboard Radio Intercom Headset System to a wireless system. This is so that you can operate the pumper and be outside and still maintain communications in the purchase, as well as of the chargers and batteries and associated appearances. The Division of Fire is recommending that council waive formal bidding and award the project to P and R Communications of Dayton, Ohio, for the total cost of eighty-one thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-40 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-40 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-41.
A resolution awarding the bid for sanitary sewer replacement at I-75 and National Road requested by the Development and Engineering Services to CG Construction and Utilities, Inc., at the lowest and best bid price of one-hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The bids were open publicly for the sanitary sewer replacement at I-75 and National Road on April 25th. We've enclosed the bid tabulation sheet for the reference bid. Seven sets of specs were issued. Six contractors submitted bids. Those ranged from one-hundred and forty-nine six ninety-two up to just north of two eighteen, two-hundred and eighteen thousand. Our estimate for the project was two-hundred and forty thousand. The project will replace a seventy-year-old section of the sanitary sewer in the northwest quadrant of I-75 and National Road. You'll recall that somewhere around December 20th, when it was nice and cold, it collapsed last winter. Crews worked out there all night, and it was a pretty rough scene, and it was good that we were able to get a contractor out there. There were a lot of good decisions made on that site. We've inspected several spans of this, and I think that Director Cron has come up with a really good program for this design. We've written out the bid documents that this work cannot commence until after the airshow weekend, and it'll be completed by November 3rd, so I'm recommending awarding the contract for this project to CG Construction and Utilities Incorporated as the lowest and best bid at their price of one-hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-41 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
A resolution awarding the, oh. Good morning.
Now, this is where you go, Councilman Folic?
Yes, that's correct. Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-42.
And this is where I read it, right?
Right.
Okay. A resolution authorizing cooperation and contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding ODOT improvements at the ramp intersection of southbound Interstate 75 and Northwoods Boulevard, being ODOT Project PID number 117515.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Your Honor, the City of Vandalia and ODOT have partnered to install a new traffic signal at Northwoods Boulevard and the I-75 southbound ramps. We contracted with Choice One Engineering for the engineering and design of the new signal last year. ODOT is preparing to sell the project on June 8th, 2023. We need to authorize and sign the contract and submit payment for our share of the project no later than May 26, 2023. The total estimated cost of the construction is four-hundred and ten thousand dollars. Our share of the construction cost is sixty thousand sixty dollars. The Ohio Department of Jobs and Commerce has committed eighty thousand dollars, and ODOT is picking up the rest. We will bring a resolution forward, oh, this is on May 15th, this is this resolution, recommend approval of it to partner with ODOT on the project, and I'll point out that when the other signal was installed, there was what was called a traffic signal warrant analysis, is a good government term, and a light at that location that we're discussing is not, was not, it didn't validate investing the money there based on what the traffic flow was. When I heard from somebody, a business owner in the area, about their difficulties turning left towards Kroger, we went ahead and we did that warrant analysis for that light, and so that's where we are with the project.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-42.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 23-R-42. Are there any comments?
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Do we know, is the traffic signal at?
Ingle.
Ingle and Northwoods, will that remain, or is that going to be, it will?
And I was going to have the same question, and I believe the reason why the question, it would be timed out according, correct, because the other lights are ODOT. The one at Falls Creek is ours, Ingle Row is ours, so they'll be all coordinated, even though the others are ODOT.
Yep.
Correct, yeah.
And that one's going to have-
That is an assumption that I made.
Yeah, and that one's going to have preemption as well, and this is also part of the consideration with the ring road development around the north side of the airport to-
That'll be good.
-get folks moving through that corridor.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have lastly, resolution of this evening, that being 23-R-43.
A resolution approving the purchase of four TAPCo-brand pedestrian-crossing rapid-flashing beacons from A&amp;A Safety at a cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Yes, Mr. Wint?
Your Honor, in an effort to enhance safety of pedestrians and children, we would like to install pedestrian-crossing rapid-flashing beacons at four locations in the city. These devices are designed and used for mid-block crosswalk locations where cross-traffic does not stop. Two of the devices would be installed at the crosswalks at Demet Elementary and Helkey Elementary Schools, and one would be on Alkaline Springs Road, where we've installed the ADA-compliant ramps that cross from Art Park to Butler High School. The fourth would be at the crosswalk on Stone Quarry Road that is near the entrance of the Copperfield subdivision in order to get over to the sports complex. The devices we are proposing would be solar units activated by a push button on the poles. Due to the lead time on these specialty devices, I'm recommending waiving the formal bidding and purchasing the devices from the lowest and best price submitted from either Pathmaster or A&amp;A Safety. We would like to have them installed by the beginning of the next school year, and I am showing that that is A&amp;A Safety. My apologies.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-43.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Folic to approve Resolution 23-R-43 as presented. Are there any comments?
Quick question, kind of related. What is the status of the sidewalk from, I mean, the township project? The sidewalk that just still isn't there?
Yes, we had a bilateral meeting to discuss that sidewalk with the township, this being on the north side of Stone Quarry, going from where the corporate limits end, just west of the rec center and sports complex, out to Peters Pike or Morton Middle School. The township reports that it got quite far in those discussions, and I recall that Council member Fars and Superintendent Rob O'Leary and Administrator Vogel and I all had a meeting out there with some of the property owners. They got very far into the project, and then it would seem that they withdrew, some of the property owners withdrew their interest in participating in that project, and so the township has indicated that it's loath to move forward with any sort of right-of-way acquisition or funding for that at this point, and so it seems that the project has stalled out for the moment, but it would be a good addition in the school district, indicates that it would be able to save hundreds of thousands of dollars by reducing busing costs, because children would be able to walk to school.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just additionally, thanks for looking into this and improving safety for residents and all that would use this, and I've seen some of these devices. They really do get your attention. There's been some that have been in the center aisle, like at a boulevard. Many times they get hit. Yes, there's a picture of it. Many times they'll get hit in the center of, if there's a boulevard, and on each side of this, as they strobe, it really gets your attention and really slows people down to, you know, alert them that it is a state law to yield to pedestrians. Now, the locations we have, and I think I asked this before, about adding the pedestrian sign by law to yield to them, right, that would also include on that sign?
We, yes, we will make sure that we post the signage that's in compliance with the uniform manual on traffic.
Yeah.
And so to Mr. Hazlitt, our Assistant Superintendent, see these big piano-key crosswalks? That's what we're after, nice and visible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our first ordinance of this evening, that being Ordinance 23-11 in its first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million three hundred ninety-nine thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Your Honor, I would suggest that you pass this in its first reading, as well as the bond anticipation note and the land acquisition note. There are two reasons for that. One, we have our first reading so that we can debate and have discourse, but two, the second reading isn't for an entire month from now. The other portion, too, is from a policy decision. If council would like to weigh paying down debt, there's the current interest, but there's very relatively little in the issuance costs, and with what the timeline is and what would be required in the mechanics of supplementing the budget, it's important that you move forward the land acquisition and the bond anticipation notes for the purpose of remaining compliant and not being in a position where you have to do an emergency supplemental and pay down in a fly-by-night way. If you do this, your costs are going to be relatively low, and you still reserve the right to pay down these notes at any time that you want, if that is the desire of council. So, I'd just like to explain that, and I would discourage you from tabling any sort of item, knowing that there's not even a second reading for a month, and there's plenty of time for discussion.
And there's no prepayment penalties of any kind, right?
The finance director is not here, and I know that we have very large-
Yes, she is.
Oh, you, weren't you seated over there? You usually sit over there. My apologies. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I will come back on, I will come back with that to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land at Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July 26, 2023. The total amount due is one million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand in principal plus interest. The 2023 budget included an interest payment of sixty-five thousand dollars. The maturity date on the new note will be in July of 2024. The debt schedule, the debt is scheduled to be paid off in 2036.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-11 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Ordinance 23-11 in its first reading. Are there any comments?
Just to reiterate what the city manager had said, I mean, to Mr. Grace's suggestion earlier, obviously, because of the summer schedule and the timeline of the refinancing, this just gets the ball rolling so that we can make a decision and have time to discuss it if council wants to change a policy decision that has been here for a while, so just a formality at this point to keep the time clock moving.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-12 in its first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of one million two hundred forty-one thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Thank you, Your Honor. The bond anticipation note for a fire engine, the 2016 Fire Engine Bond Anticipation Note matures on August 23rd, 2023. The note was combined with the Fire Ladder Truck 2021 Bond Anticipation Note in order to save on the costs of issuance. The total remaining amount due on the note is one million four hundred twenty-nine thousand. That's one hundred and ninety-two thousand for the fire engine and one million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the Fire Ladder Truck plus interest. The amount of the principal payment for the fire engine is forty-eight thousand and one hundred and forty thousand for the Fire Ladder Truck. 2023 budget includes a paydown amount of forty-eight thousand on the outstanding principal due for the fire engine and the one hundred and forty thousand for the ladder truck, plus an interest payment of fifty-five thousand dollars. The maturity on the new note will be in August 2024. The debt on the fire engine is scheduled to be paid in full in 2026 and 2031 for the ladder truck.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-12 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 23-12 in its first reading. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-13 in its first reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1040 Water and Sewer Permits, a Section 1040.02, permit and entry fees of the Vandalia Codified Ordinances by adopting a new schedule of fees for water and sewer permits and providing for an annual adjustment.
Thank you. Mr. Wint?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. In the interest of time, if it's okay, I'll explain 23-13 and 23-14 at the same time. The first is water and sewer tap fees. The second is the DES fee update. We previously presented this, the annual update for these sets of fees. We've waited several years between fee adjustments in the past. The current fee schedule went into effect in May 2022. I'm just proposing a two percent adjustment to all fees that are included in the packet. That would take effect on July 1, 2023, and then a two percent escalator each year after that, January 1st of each year. The fees would round up to the nearest dollar amount, or for the smaller fees that are cents per square foot, it would be to the nearest cent. For example, this is your building permit fees, your zoning fees, your miscellaneous permit fees, water sewer tap fees that are included. Last year, we did pretty extensive research and presented on that, the market comparability, and so what we'll do is we'll have staff continually monitor each year and make a recommendation to council if there's a need to halt that.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve 23-13 as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick to approve ordinance 23-13 in its first reading. Are there any other comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next, we have ordinance 23-14.
An ordinance amending Section 1442.05 and 1482.10D4 of the Van Dalia Codified Ordinances by adopting a new schedule of fees for permits and inspections.
Thank you, and we'll let the City Manager's previous description stand. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution, ordinance 23-14 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve ordinance 23-14 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. We have no ordinances in the second reading. However, we do have one emergency ordinance, that being ordinance 23-10.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer and water.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve emergency ordinance 23-10.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve ordinance 23-10 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next, we have reports from boards and commissions where we have a conditional use for a daycare at 732 West National Road. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Dan Meyer of Development Architecture Collaborative, on behalf of Flight Academy, has submitted an application requesting a conditional use approval for the property located at 732 West National Road. The proposal is to add a daycare to the property. Daycare centers are permitted only as a conditional use in the highway business zoning district. As proposed, the conditional use would take up a renovated 3,445-square-foot area of the existing Flight Academy space at 732 West National Road. The proposal also includes an exterior play area. This is of particular concern to multiple departments and staff. On April 25, 2023, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with one condition. Staff, of course, is recommending approval. The condition that's stated here is that no exterior play area shall be constructed as part of an approved conditional use, and then it goes on with parts about meeting different requirements of the Van Dalia zoning code. I would recommend that that portion be dropped in that you just make the condition, no exterior play area shall be constructed as part of an approved conditional use, or something there, too.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the conditional use for a daycare at 732 West National Road with the condition that no exterior play area shall be constructed as part of the approved conditional use.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve the conditional use for the daycare at 732 West National Road with the condition that no exterior play area be constructed as a conditional use. Any comments? Call the roll.
Hey, excuse me, Your Honor, my apologies. The applicant is also here, if you care to hear anything from them.
Would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I have concern is, I believe State of Ohio for daycare requires an exterior play area as part of their approval process to be able to operate. When we had the conversation with the planning department, it was requirements that we had a proper fire lane, bollards around protecting the play area, as well as having a fence and gated area. This is the first I've heard that that was not allowed. That was not how it was approved at the commission, the planning commission, so I just, I'm not quite sure how to resolve that. But I believe State of Ohio for daycares requires an exterior play area, so that would basically make it a void project if they can't have that external area.
So, I, I'm sorry, I have a question then in regards to this. What is the minimum for the licensing the Department of Education allows for outside? Because I think there's a certain number.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be very, it's a very minimal amount of space, and that was the whole intention, was we would design it to the minimal amount while maintaining fire access per the fire department, creating that, make sure that everybody has access to the back of the building, we're preventing that. And that was all seemed to be kind of understood and agreed to. But they do require a minimum amount. It's not very big, and I think even what we show was slightly, only slightly bigger because of a ramp access on the back that would allow accessibility from the interior daycare to access the play area, which would make sure we were fully accessible to all participants. But it doesn't need to be any bigger than it has to be per State of Ohio requirements. This daycare is really only meant for about 25 to 30 kids. It can't include, I believe it's pre, give me a second, it can't include pre-kindergarten because that is grouped into the K-12 dynamic. So, we can only have up to preschool itself for the daycare facility, so we have a very limited amount of kids access. And that was kind of one of the important points, was the space is very limited in that arrangement versus a typical daycare that might have multiple play areas and things like that. We're kind of limited just to a single exterior relief area for the kids.
Do you know any more of the dynamics as far as the requirement as to the timeframe and equipment? I mean, if you say there's 25 kids, that, I imagine, what would be the smallest you could have? Some sort of a slide or a swing?
It's literally a single play structure, I think, for up to 40 kids.
Yeah.
So, it's a pretty small area, and it's currently a dock area that's not utilized in any way, other than a rolling trash can that kind of rolls around there.
So, that area could be reduced.
It could be made as small as that'll allow per State of Ohio requirements for daycare.
We don't know what that is at this point.
Yeah, I wish, if I knew what time it is, I'd tell you, but it's not a lot. And again, that hatched area was the requirement that we allowed to show that the fire apparatus could get through conveniently without getting too close. And we even talked about the possibility that it may angle the wall for the drive approach so that it could be even easier, given that the back property line has a slight angle as well. But again, the whole idea was, you can see that the proposed daycare area is almost as big as the play area, and it doesn't need to be that big. So, I would be okay if there's a restriction that whatever the minimum allowable per State of Ohio as part of this would be, I think, an acceptable solution, while also still meeting all the fire criteria, which was part of the conditional approval, is that we met all the fire approach criteria.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. As the Public Safety Director, given the layout, the extensive staff, time that's been put into this, I don't think that this is a safe or good approach in that there should not be a playground back there. That's the reason for the condition as far as any sort of tacit agreement. As the City Manager, I'm not aware of any of those. The recourse that I would suggest for the applicant is to, if City Council were to choose to move forward with the condition as presented, then the applicant lobby the appropriate department at the State of Ohio in request of an administrative variance, which is and can be a possibility.
I just, I'll just comment real briefly. I know at the last, we discussed this at our last study session prior to tonight. My major objection to this is we are putting a proposed playground in a heavily-traveled parking area behind a commercial retail store. You know, the business right next door literally has five to six full-size moving trucks parked 10 feet from where this playground would be. I just don't think this is a location that a playground is suitable for children, regardless of what safety factors or safety prevention mechanisms are put in place, that it's just, we're trying to squeeze something in there that was never intended to be there, and I don't think it's a safe option for that operation. So, I mean, I'm fine with the daycare facility inside. Obviously, I understand that there's a potential, that there's a licensing challenge there. I just don't think an outdoor playground attached to the back of a shopping mall with commercial truck traffic and other vehicles traveling behind it is where a outdoor playground needs to go. So, that's my objection and why I amended the condition.
I would agree to point, and also, is that playground available to be inside, or the requirements say that it does have to be outside?
They have to have a fresh air option.
Fresh air option.
Correct. Because there is actually play area inside.
Yeah, there could be other fresh air options.
That's right.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next, we have a variance for a front yard setback at 831 Roxanna Drive.
Your Honor, I've enclosed in your packet a memorandum from Mr. Graham, wherein the applicant, Mr. Jake Hazlitt, has submitted an application requesting a variance to allow an awning to encroach on the minimum front yard setback of the property located at 831 Roxanna Drive. The purpose of the request is to allow a 128-square-foot awning to be added to the front of the property. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval of this variance, and this is characteristic of many other houses that are in the immediate neighborhood.
Mr. Hazlitt, would you like to add anything to it, or you're good? All right. You have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the front yard setback at 831 Roxanna Drive to allow the 128-foot awning to be added to the front of his property.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve the variance for the front yard setback at 831 Roxanna Drive. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. That brings us to the April 2023 bill listing in the amount of $2,806,652, and the April expenses over $50,000. And we also have the purchase card detail in the amount of $28,044.07. That brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Fairst?
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Moving right along, Councilman Folick.
You know. Two things, real quick. First, just to thank staff for the board's commissions and volunteers dinner back on May the 3rd. I thought it was a very nice event. Bee jokes got a little old, about two or three in, but other than that.
Or one or two.
Yeah. But I think it was a nice event, and glad that we could recognize our group of volunteers that serve in various capacities throughout the organization. And then the last thing, just because it's going to be four weeks or so before we meet again, but Mr. Wynn mentioned earlier, too, but I'm excited that today was the day that we started putting up the veterans banners. This has been a passionate project of mine, and I just want to thank Mr. Wynn, Ms. Holloway, Rich Hopkins, whom am I missing, Rob Cron, the public work staff, and then also Erica Vogel at Butler Township and Nick at the Chamber of Commerce, because I think all the partners combined is what pulled this project off. We've had a tremendous response to it. You know, I wish we could have accommodated all of our veterans, but unfortunately, we have a limited number of real estate, so we were able to accommodate 151 veterans this time around. So, those should all be up by Memorial Day weekend, and they'll be up through Veterans Day. And I also, again, want to shout out two more things with that, is the service organizations, the AMVETS, the American Legion, and the VFW Post that financially gave a significant donation to help offset the cost of the banners. But then also a local resident, Dave Arnold, who's on Planning Commission, and I cannot underscore the amount of time and energy that he put into the banner designs, the things that he was able to accomplish with some of these photos that people submitted. I mean, wrinkled, and scans of scans of scans, and they look amazing. So, Mr. Arnold is to be commended for his dedication to this project, and especially as a volunteer, and putting across his side business to help us get this project done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing additional to that, thank you.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing this evening.
Brings us to Vice Mayor Lewis.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, and I have no further comments. At this time, we're going to go back into our executive session to finish what we started.
Your Honor, this would just be to discuss the sale of real property.
Okay, it's recommended that council enter into executive session to discuss the sale of real property. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to go into executive session. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Hertz.
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero.